Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's August 10th, 2022. It is 10 o'clock and two county commissioners are here. One county commissioner is not able to make it today and we're 22 days away from the WVU picket. So with that, we'll start with consent and approvals. Priorities now.
Morning.
Morning.
We have no exonerations. We have minutes from August 3rd, 2022. Vouchers: General County Fund, $351,054.87. 911-481-67. Chestnut Ridge Park, $6,009.67. Camp Muffley, $6,006.34. Mason Dixon Park, $4,112. Mon County Center, $3,004.35. Recreation Levy, $5,078.87. Reallocated coal, $1,003.57. Sessors valuation, $7,074.27. Payroll, $1,008.40, $799.94. Purchasing card vouchers: General County Fund, $25,005.29. Home confinement, $5,003.40, $98. Chestnut Ridge Park, $226.12. Mason Dixon Park, $170.75. Mon County Center, $997.02. Sessors valuation, $1,008.45. For a voucher total of $2,258,781.51. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for August 10th, 2022. And then we have one separate item to take up.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second. First, proper moves in second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Second issue.
You all have previously approved Sept- excuse me, September 21st as the next administrative closing date. Clerk's office has asked that be changed to September 28th, which is the following Wednesday.
Sure.
I just need a motion.
Like the motion to approve that revised date of September 28th?
Second. Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Now, some positive news. Introduction of new employees. Let's start. Is there someone for Carrie Blaney, the county clerk, or was that just a... Oh, great. How you doing? We're in a good mood today.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Stephanie Penley and on behalf of Carrie Blaney, the county clerk, I want to introduce our new employee to the clerk's office. This is Taylor Bomar and she's a full-time, non-exempt employee. She started Monday, August 8th.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome to the county.
Thank you.
I think you'll enjoy it.
Thank you.
Second, we have Mr. Pesco, or JR. And we have back Seth. Great to see you again, Seth.
Great to see you.
Good morning, everyone. For you, I bring Seth Hubbard. He's going to be our new park superintendent at Camp Muffley. He will be salary employee at $35,000 a year with your approval.
Move to approve the position as presented?
Second. Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you so much.
Welcome. We're very excited. I think we have an exceptional team now and we're looking forward to great things.
Well, Seth is a current employee.
Yes.
He's moving up from part-time to full-time, so he's taken on more responsibilities and we're excited to see him in this role. I'm really excited about the things you can bring to this particular position. So, thank you, Seth.
Thank you guys so much.
And look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
You guys have a good day.
Get those lifeguards. That's the hardest thing, I think. Thank you. We have at this time comments from the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to us? We'd love to hear from you. Seeing none, we have no more comments from the public. We have now presentation from the honorable and infamous Becca Finn Clark, WVU Mon County 4-H Extension. Welcome. Come on down.
Honorable and infamous.
I know. I can say, this is a good mood.
That's great. I love that.
Yes.
I'll make it on a button. So, yes, thank you so much for having me. I'm Becca Finn Clark and I'm the 4-H Extension agent here in Montague County. And I am very, very excited to present to you two new employees who have joined our office staff over the last couple of months. And so I'll let them talk a little bit about their background, what they bring to the position. So, our first and newest employee started last week. She is county-funded, so you all decided to take a chance on extension and adding a new employee into our office. Her focus will be, well, I should tell you, her name is Amanda and I'd call her Webster, but she got married since I knew her back in the day. But it's Mandy Patterson and her title is Family and Community Development Program Coordinator. And so she'll go out into the community and do different family-type programs, work with the grandparents, his parents' programs, just lots of different things. So, we're excited to have her join the group and I know that she'll bring great things to the county. So, Mandy, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself?
Thank you for having me and I've settled in and it's been quite a transition hopping right into the fair, which was fun. But I'm a West Virginia girl from the Eastern Panhandle, WVU graduate, and I worked in the western end of the county for about 15 years with a nonprofit. So, I really am invested in empowering families, bringing resources to them, and I'm very grateful that you guys have faith in me doing that. And Becca, too. So, and I think collaborations within all of us and the other new employees, we will build a lot of new relationships and just expand. So, I thank you so much for having me.
For the public's purpose, can you give us kind of how you directly support the public in your role?
Sure. So, we are, the great thing about it is I think we are going to navigate some needs that are already present or that are told to us. So, a lot of financial literacy, a lot of just giving resources for, I'm going to be supporting nutrition, ag, and then relaying that into school systems. I think we really want to work with the older populations and just expanding those relationships.
Yeah, I think whenever we were talking, the Extension Committee was talking about hiring this position. It sounded like it was going to be, as it came in, it was going to be kind of a ball of clay and it was going to kind of go in the direction where support was needed across all of Extension. So, you were, obviously I was part of that evaluation committee and you were, we made a very good choice in hiring you and I'm looking forward to all that you could do for our citizens. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for that support. I'm really proud to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mandy is well-connected with the community. She's worked in the county for many, many years and so we are excited to have her. Like she said, I mean, there are needs that we haven't been able to fill. I mean, people have come to Extension for different programs and different activities with different populations and we just have not had the capacity to do that. So, it's really exciting to have that opportunity. Also with us is our new Agriculture and Natural Resources Extension Agent, Betsy Thomas. And so Betsy started on July 1st. She's seen camp. She's going to see the fair this week. So, we are very excited to have, I'm especially excited to have another Extension Agent to work side by side and again, continue to fill the needs of the county and the community. Extension Agents are partially funded through WVU and so she is a faculty member just like myself. We're responsible for doing, teaching, research, and service in the county, on the county level. And so she's hit the ground running and I'll let her tell you a little bit about herself. So, this is Betsy Thomas.
Hi, Betsy.
Hey, there. I sure do appreciate the time to get to talk to you all today and I am very excited to come back home. And I'm a native West Virginian from Harrison County and I had opportunities to move around to several different states. I've been in North Carolina and Illinois, in Champagne, Illinois, and then Chicago as well. But I've had the opportunity to come back and I am so grateful to be back here, to be able to be an Agriculture and Natural Resources Agent. So, thank you all so very much.
And just like I put Mandy on the spot, for the public's knowledge, how do you interact with the public in your position?
Yeah, I'm going to be doing a lot of, I think, a lot of programs and outreach, being able to teach different things specifically directed toward agriculture and natural resources. And so, looking at, you know, different programs that we could maybe establish, I know that we've already done a beekeepers session and we're going to plan a couple more of those sessions coming up in September and October where we're reaching out to the community, making sure that they get those resources, are able to ask questions, and really encouraging people to really get back to some of those things that are absolutely necessary for us. So, it's really getting programs together, talking about, you know, even just how to grow your healthy food and how to do that personally yourselves. And that's the things that we look at, that we'll be doing.
Great. And with both of you, I appreciate, I know you'll be working with our director of our center out there. And when you talk about healthy foods and stuff like that with our innovative innovation kitchen, our community food innovation center, you know, I know you guys will be doing a lot of work with them. So, it's all kind of pieces of the puzzle are starting to come together is what we are envisioning with that whole building and putting Extension out there. So, thanks to the commission, all the current commissioners, former commissioner Hawkins for that vision, but now you're starting to see it come together as far as now you have the pieces to try to provide that support, so.
And I'm going to put on my other hat, I'm the executive director of the Pantry Plus More program and Becca has done a tremendous job with her students, working with us in the pantry. And I'll say to you and Mandy especially, especially you're working with grandparents and we're seeing it, I think it's 30 to 40% of families now being raised by grandparents in this community. And we have services from the Pantry Plus More and we're, and I know I could, on behalf of the board, say that if you have questions, concerns in food, we are more than willing to work with you because, as you said, the more we work together, the better we solve our problems. So, I'm very excited. Your first priority is to fix the weather for the fair. And I heard you've done a great job for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so your job is still, your job is still safe.
You put that in.
You put that in.
Just ordering for.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just want to wrap up by saying how much we appreciate your support. I mean, there are very few counties that can boast the way that we can about what you all do for Extension in this county and how much you believe in what we do. And so I sincerely appreciate that. You'll see me soon to talk about 4-H. We always give a 4-H report. And I saw on your agenda, you have a letter coming up from Emma, so I wanted to point out, that's the young lady that came last year with the county map and the landmarks. And so I'm really proud to see that she wrote you. So, thank you again. We really do appreciate you. If there's anything that we can do, if you hear of anything that could serve you and the citizens of the county, you know that we're there and we're willing to do whatever.
Priority, my wife told me she had to find out when, and Alyssa Poe, Isabel Poe?
Isabel Poe.
She wrote to us, it's August 20th and we have put on a schedule to go out there. That is mandated by my wife. She enjoyed it and I'm learning, please understand, I'm from Philadelphia, so I'm learning more about agriculture, very slowly. So, I'm looking forward to that event.
And we'll be there. You'll see Betsy and I there.
Oh, good. So, I'll look forward to seeing you there.
Yep. So, thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Anything else? Okay. Grants? No, we don't have any grants. Okay. Correspondence. Notice of public hearing on sale property identified as 7th Ward Tax Map 6, Parcel 69.1 by the WVU Board of Governors.
Notice is required by statute and that is the actual Applebee's building and lot that's being sold.
Oh.
But they're required to notify the commission, so they have.
Okay. Thank you. Letter from Emma Solers, did you just mention it? Member of the Pone Town Pigs 4-H Club inviting the commissioners to the Mon County Fair, Livestock Auction, and Mon County FFA and 4-H Show and Sale. And I know it's August, I know I'm going out to Wadestown on August 20th. I'm very excited about that.
You want me to read it?
Sure.
Is it long?
Is it?
Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, why not? She took the time to write it. I think we should hear it.
Emma Solers, member of the Pone Town Pigs 4-H Club, and this is my second year of showing animals as a project. I'm writing this letter to introduce myself and share with you what I have learned in 4-H this year. Last year, I raised two pens of rabbits for the show and sale and this year, I decided to expand my livestock project to include two market lambs who are named Camille and Lucy, along with my two pens of rabbits, which I have bred and raised from some of the females that I raised last year. Taking on an additional livestock project this year has had its challenges with the rising cost of feed and the occasional feed shortages that required some driving around to get everything that I needed. But overall, I have learned a lot and a lot of my fun, and had a lot of fun at the same time. I learned the importance of time management because with all of my rabbits and two lambs, I had to use my time wisely so that everyone got the proper care and attention that they needed. I would like to invite you to the Mon County Fair to come see me with my animals. I will be participating in the market rabbit and lamb shows on August 10th, which start at 7:00. Then on August 13th, I will be selling one of my pens of rabbits and one of my lambs at the Mon County Fair Livestock Auction, beginning at 6:00. My other pens of rabbits, as well as my other market lamb, will be shown and sold at the Mon County FFA and 4-H Show and Sale on August 20th in Wadestown. That show begins at 11:00 a.m. and there is a buyer's dinner starting at 3:00 p.m. with auction immediately following at 6:00 p.m. I hope you will be able to attend one or both of the shows this August and I look forward to meeting with you to share about my experiences in 4-H. I would greatly appreciate your support and sponsorship by considering the purchase of one of my 2022 4-H projects. Do you have any questions? She left her phone number. They're cute animals.
Yes.
Very nice.
I'm looking forward to it. Any other correspondence?
I have nothing else.
Okay. I got just a couple of things. Tom, I believe you received this letter, too. We received a letter from LJ Giuliani about the old Bartlett House property.
No, I didn't.
Well, it came last night.
Oh, maybe I didn't.
It came yesterday afternoon, but I just wanted to note that we did receive it. Just some, it's a very nice letter to Carrie DeMasi.
Okay.
And it's praising everything she's doing up on the hill, but reminding her that the issue of their building here is still a problem and they're having problems with people camping out, illicit drug use, public defecation, you know. So, it's, I did, he sent it to us and I wanted to acknowledge that we did receive it. He also sent it to the city council members, too.
Good.
So, I did want to mention that. And this is a letter we got from Jeff Ray yesterday letting us know, actually last night, letting us know that they received a notice from Senator Capito's office that that earmark request for MUB was denied, didn't make the cut. So, I think that was in the paper today.
Right.
And we'll talk about that a little bit later.
Yes.
Oh, one other thing.
Sure.
I did receive, it wasn't a correspondence, but somebody pulled me aside at the parade on Tuesday, I'm sorry, on Monday. What day was that?
Monday.
My days are all melding together. And asked if we could remind DOH about the care of the entrances to the city. I know the weed, the Star City weeds.
705.
I know they've done them some.
Yes.
But there's still some, I don't know why they can't remove all the gravel that accumulated over the winter. But they were out yesterday with the street cleaner.
Yes, they were.
Going up and down, but, and it looked like they may have gone across the bridge. But coming in 705, just, you know, that's, these are the entrances to our county, to our cities. And we just wanted to remind, asked if we would remind DOH to get out of school and people start coming back into town that, you know, it paints a, it paints a first impression and if we, they could address that, that would be great.
I'll submit that later today. Several others, yeah.
And since you're the one that...
Talks with them. And they are very good at responding to me, so I will send that out. I think that's a great, yeah. That same individual caught me, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. No unfinished business, so we'll go to new business. Consideration approved requisition number nine for the University Town Center Series 2020 Property Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for $9,831.25 and that is for monthly MUCAP expenses for the district.
Move to approve requisition number nine as presented?
Second. Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consideration approved requisition number 65 for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Okay. So, the other requisition was for the property tax. Now, this is for the excise tax. $1,581.25 and again, that's for MUCAP expenses.
Move to approve requisition number 65 as presented?
Second. Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider funding request by the Stewartstown Community Council regarding funding assistance from the community center expenditure account in the amount of $6,390.
I move that we approve the request be funded out of the 30K that we have budgeted under coal severance account, 002-908-568-10.
Second, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, this is for two window air conditioners and installation brackets and new kitchen countertops. And the Stewartstown Community Council is very good every year about bringing us a small project and again, continuously improving that center and the amenities in that center for the citizens. And they always kind of meet us halfway, so again, we have a $30,000 fund set aside for just these type of expenditures.
Right. Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consideration approved the transfer ownership of Canine Azim to Sergeant Timothy Hun as requested by Sheriff Perry Palmer. This is self-explanatory, basically.
Move to approve the request as presented?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Just on a side note, if you remember, this is the animal that the folks out in the Blacksville area had raised money to purchase this animal for Deputy Hun at the time. So, that's been, that's probably when you first came on the commission, I would imagine.
That's right. It's been like almost 10 years.
Yeah. So, that's a, that's a good, it's been a dog in good service.
Do we have a contact there that we might want to just send the letter saying, thank them, so that, say what we're doing?
I imagine that the sheriff does. I will ask, I will ask about that.
So, they realize what's going on?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a good idea. To consider for approval of two letters to support for the MUB, IJDC application for water and sewer upgrades at Chaplain Hill.
Move that we approve the letters as provided?
Second. Really self-explanatory.
Yeah.
It's a different grant.
Yeah. And these cover, the earmark that was denied, these grants cover that same, that same area. They're just broken up, broken up into two, a water and a sewer. The total value of the sewer is $6,838,000, of which they're going after $5,470,400. $5,470,400 for that. And then the county is putting in, between county and Westridge are putting in $1,367,600. The water one is total value of $7,255,000 and the county is putting in $382,400. MUB is taking out an IJDC loan in the amount of $1,68600. So, their, MUBs have some skin in the game. And then the actual ask of the granting agency is $5,804. So, the total value of those is $14,093,000. So, hopefully, again, we've had these opportunities going on concurrently because we're not leaving any stone unturned in regards to funding for this project, so.
And this grant came out of numerous meetings and discussions and I do want to thank MUB for also contributing financially to it, so they believe it's an important project, too. So, everyone's working together on this. Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consideration to prove an appointment to the Mon County Building Commission?
You missed F.
Oh. Let's do G and I'll come back to F.
Okay.
I apologize. I put the wrong one. Mon County Building Commission, I messed up.
Wayne Weber has been serving on the building commission for many years. He wants to be reappointed. We didn't have any other applicants. We've been advertising it for several weeks, so.
I move that we move to reappoint Wayne Weber as presented?
Second. Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider for approval request for funding of startup costs associated with the Mountaineer Trail Network.
If you remember, Susan Riddle from the Visit Mountaineer Country CVB gave you a short presentation a few weeks ago and she said that she would submit a request, a formal request. We got that in the, we got an invoice instead, so.
Right, right, right.
So, I guess this is her, their request.
I move that we approve funding in the amount of $15,000 from account, our coal severance account of 002-401-568.
Second. Proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider for approval request of up to $60,000 in funding assistance to the Mon County Development Authority to cover interest-only payments on the property located 3712 Collins Ferry Road while further loan details are finalized with the state of West Virginia.
I move to approve the proven fund the request as presented out of General Fund 431-568.
Second.
Okay. And then discussion.
Yeah.
When we were talking a couple months ago about an entity that might be coming to town, we were working through a deal to house that entity in the Old Mylan Warehouse out on Collins Ferry. When that entity, the state gave them a better deal somewhere else. The commission had already given a head nod to help, help with that deal. It was going to be a three-year whole, we were a three-year commitment to cover the interest only on the loan. So, when that deal ended up going south, which I'm not really sure is public or not, when I say south, I mean literally southwest Virginia, the development authority, we're still in the middle of closing on the building. So, we have another opportunity in the building, so the request remains, but it's a shortened time period. They're only needing us to hold the interest for three months as opposed to two, two or three years, I think. Yeah, two years. It was the original request. So, the ask is much lower, but the opportunity is still the same to bring an economic development entity into that facility. So, some of the stuff is still in the works, so it's kind of hard to really talk about it publicly, so.
I have mixed feelings on this. I mean, I'm totally for funding it. It's just a frustration that I know we've worked hard on bringing a business in, we thought we had them, and things happen. And unfortunately, it's very frustrating. I spent six months of my time working on this area and I do have to say thank you to the state, though they did offer some other businesses in. So, I will say that, not to the one that we wanted. some other businesses in. So I will say that, not to the one that we wanted. So that's all I can say.
And the entity is coming in there is really neat, and hopefully, we'll be able to talk about that.
And hope it grows, too.
Yes. And again, it is, it's a new technology, and it is something that has a potential for a lot of growth in employment and revenue to the county and the state, so.
Okay. So proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or there are other new business?
No.
Sean?
No.
Do we have any reports from any elected officials? Great, come on. Tina, not Latisha.
So I just wanted to share with you something that we're very proud of. I don't know if you know it or not, but the Municipal League Conference was last week here in Morgantown.
Yes.
And our own mayor Patty Lewis was inducted into the Municipal League Officials Hall of Fame for 35 years of public service.
Wow.
So we're very proud of that and honored to have her as mayor. I just wanted to share that with you.
No, that is great news and well deserved.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, as Mon County, we're very proud of her, so.
We have a great working relationship.
And sometime soon, can we get an update on where the traffic lights?
Absolutely.
So sometime we'd like, I know that that question's going to be asked because it comes up about every couple of months.
I'll have an update for you next week.
Okay, that would be fantastic.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the good news. Okay, reports from county commissioners? Sean?
Since the last meeting, last Thursday, we had our Mylan Park Executive Committee and Juma Joint Meeting to discuss a economic development opportunity in the county. And then after that, I had my, in the afternoon, I had my sync with our broadband consultants. Friday, had breakfast with Joe Statler, Ron Lidle, and Frank Devano. That's our monthly breakfast. It got moved like four times, so it ended up on a Friday. And then we had staff reports. In the evening, I went to the Westover Senior Center. And Tom, I'm amazed, that's the first time I've been there post-COVID. And there really got, I mean, there's really just got a lot going on.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it was a lot of people there. They had dinner. They had a band outside. And it was, it was exciting to see that much activity in one of our, in one of the counties, not the county ours, but one of, an offering in our, an amenity in our city, in our, in Westover to provide for seniors. So it's pretty cool. Saturday, I had a monthly breakfast with the men of Morgantown. That's a group that meets monthly for Saturday of the month down in Shoney's in Sabreton. And then I went to the joint fundraiser of the River Road and Clay Batel Volunteer Fire Department that was going on in conjunction with your backpack thing. So I know Mylan Park was pretty busy on Saturday. This week, I had a, our regular Juma meeting on Tuesday. Got a lot of updates. Again, we talked a little bit about possible economic development opportunity that we're hoping to bid on. We talked about the state continuing the process of the bidding on the state track meet. So all that stuff's kind of moving forward. After that, we had a call, a joint call between our Westridge developer and Senator Manchin's office regarding our infra grant. And then I did go out to Mylan Park to meet with Dominion Energy to talk about their request to extend a line through our right of way and talk to them about that and how we can work together as they extend the line, maybe help with our ditching project, which is in the same vicinity. So anyhow, it was a very good meeting. Today's a regular day. I know on the calendar, there's a open house at Hazel's House of Hope at 2, but we're in meetings, so we won't be able to participate in that.
It is, they are doing that till 5:30.
Till 5:30, okay.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that. Okay.
Okay. Well, maybe we'll stop out after. Tomorrow, it's my busy second Thursday of the month, so it's Red Team Development Authority. Our bid proposal team is meeting. And then I, in the evening, I have a meeting with the River Road Volunteer Fire Department. Friday, we have collapsed staff reports. I'm not really sure. We do have a call with the Clay Batel FFA, but, and I will actually be helping my daughter move back to college at the same time, helping my in-laws move to town. So I'll, I'll be somewhere, but I'll be connected via phone. Monday is the Halleck Senior Center Dinner. And then Tuesday is the Blacksville Senior Center Dinner and Volunteer Fire Department Association. So it's a busy, busy couple weeks. In general, I was really looking forward to the extension staff. We talked about these positions in March, and then going through all the hiring and going through all the interview and then the hiring process to see them in place and providing service to our citizens. I'm really excited and how they're going to work in conjunction with our team at the Mon County Center. So excited that they finally got, public finally got to meet them, and looking forward to all the good work we're going to do together. So other than that, I'm done.
I just have two issues. One, very exciting, this past Saturday, back-to-school bash at Aramond County Center was exceptional. We had 1,900 students register. We gave out 1,575 backpacks, personal hygiene items, and about a little bit of everything else. And the others, we will be announcing how we can give out that information. But I do want to do a shout out to not only Pantry Plus More and the volunteers, but also to Rachel Mitchell and Brittany Israelson, who are our two employees out there, that they were unbelievable. I mean, I've never seen people, even when there was nothing to do, they were doing something, whether it was cleaning, organizing, moving it. And it made it very, very easy for us. It was, it was a really great program. And also, for those people who didn't get a backpack, there is an outreach facilitator program that the Board of Education is putting on August 15th to 17th. And you could go there and also get your backpacks, too. So we're trying to get as many backpacks as possible. And the key was that for the first time, and it's middle of summer, it's 90 degrees, they were all, the kids were talking about excited about going back to school, which is a rarity. So they were very excited having their own backpack and taking ownership of all the materials. So I want to thank everyone who was involved with that, you know, and Hazel Reuben Crane Trust, who gave a large donation for that. It's close to $80,000 to $100,000 that we put that all together. The second issue is kind of, I've kind of mentioned it a couple times, but after seeing today's paper, I feel I need to say something. In December of 2021, the City of Morgantown and Mon County Commission have each allocated $1 million to the Morgantown Utility Board's Upper Popeno Run Stream Restoration and Sanitation Sewer Replacement Project to help prevent flooding in the area. And to me, it was a very simple solution to a very simple problem. And unfortunately, it's eight months later, and we're still nowhere because there seems to be a problem with the City of Morgantown and MUB adding all these other issues. To me, the issue is simple. The public needed this problem solved. We came up with a solution. And I do hope, I believe they're still going to meet. But if we don't see a resolution in the next four weeks, I'm going to ask that we put it back on a work session and consider other cities that may want to use our funding. Because I know Star City, maybe Granville needs something. But if we're going to let it sit there, and I just want the money to be used, and hopefully, it'll get resolved now. But if not, I'm hoping then that we will put it back on the agenda.
You know, we all want to see this project go forward. I'm not really sure why it's taken so long. It appears that other things are being.
Yes. Thrown in.
It's being held hostage to other things, and those things have nothing to do with this project. And we just, I couldn't agree more that we need, we need to either move forward or find another use for those dollars. And we have plenty of, plenty of requests, so.
Yeah, the citizens are the ones who are losing. And then that also feeds into Patterson Drive. Now, it doesn't solve the Patterson Drive, but it's just one more avenue to help resolve that issue. So hopefully, they will be able to get together and resolve that issue. But if not, then we're going to, I would like to consider other options. I'd like to say four weeks. I think that's, that would be 10 months. Okay. And that's all I have. Do I have a motion to?
One more thing, Tom. I completely, it was the main thing on my list, and I didn't almost forgot to say anything. But obviously, it's the fair this week, and we want people to go out and to visit our fair. Hopefully, I think today it might rain, but then after
Friday, Saturday, Sunday looks gorgeous.
Looks like great weather. So, you know, I'm trying, I'm still developing my schedule as far as when I'll go out. But I look forward to making it out to the fair and enjoying it for the first time in two years. The parade was great.
Right.
First time, first time in two years. And now to be able to see the fair and see things getting back to normal. So I look forward to, and I appreciate all the hard work the fair board has done to put this together. Pulling off the parade was, you know, a heavy effort. But I'm glad it's happened. So anyhow, I didn't want to forget to mention that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second, we be gone.